This meeting of the guests in City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman? Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
President Echols is absent today and our meeting is being chaired by our President Pro Tem, Councilman Johnny Cannon. Councilman Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for those who are present today. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. We thank you for your blessings, your kindness, and your love that you have shown toward us. Teach us how to be more tolerable. Teach us how to be more loving toward each other, and we will continue to give you praise and glory. Protect our soldiers who are in harm's way. Give wisdom to those government officials who are in charge of making decisions for us. Let them forever be mindful of who you are and what their duties are. As we go through this process today, we ask that you will be with us, lead us, and guide us, and we will make sure that every decision that we make will be pleasing to you. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the meetings for the work session and City Council meeting held on February the 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of February the 14th through the 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, we have none today. Unfinished business, we have three ordinances that were introduced last week for the first reading. Ordinance number A is amending City Code Section 34-32 concerning voting districts. The description of the bounties for each voting district box is being updated to reflect the change made by redistricting. This also establishes an additional voting box for District 3 at Thompson's Community Center. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
B is an ordinance amending City Code Section 34-33 regarding voting places. The location of two voting centers are being changed. One is the former 12th Street Baptist Church to the old guest and high school lunchroom. The other is the former College Heights Baptist Church to Antioch Baptist Church Family Life Center. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
C is an ordinance amending City Code Section 2-4 A&amp;D regarding compensation for mayor and council members. The ordinance sets the mayor's compensation at $110,000. Was a pleasure with the council.
Make the motion we approve.
Mr. President, and I want to be mindful of the timing, but there are some adjustments that I'd like to read into the record to the ordinance as it's written.
I would think that we'd have to get a second.
That's what I was fixing to say.
You hadn't got a second.
No.
It's dying. It's slowly dying.
I would think you'd go ahead, Davy, because there was a failed in the vote and there was no second.
He can't amend that if it's not on the floor. You've got to get a second to get it on the floor for him to amend it.
We're doing away with it.
Oh, okay. Then that means you can't get yours off.
Counsel. That's correct. If we don't...
You'll have to have a second because remember it was, we've got that time period that was introduced last week, so we'll need a second.
I can second it.
I'll second.
Once a second, then you have amendment. Then you've got amendment. But you've got to have a second on this before we go anywhere.
Second.
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
No, wait a minute. He's introducing amendments.
Okay. You go ahead and just amend it, correct?
Yes, Mr. President, and the amendment that I'm introducing changes the change of the salary from 90 per annum to 110. It changes it from that, and it creates a new mayor's salary of 98,764,64. And that change is based on it being 3% above the highest possible base salary under the city's current wage scale, which is currently 95,888. And this also imposes an automatic trigger that allows for an annual salary review every January, and if the mayor's salary happens to be less than 3% of the top rate, then it will automatically adjust to whatever that 3% number is. So I make a motion that we accept these amendments to the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, amendment, and a second here. I have it before me in my hand, which is 98,764,64, and it's a base salary of 3% higher every year. Am I correct?
Yes.
Every year. And that also ties this to the council salary, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that means, okay, I just want to make sure we're all correct on this.
Those percentages won't change for council.
Okay, we had a motion and a second, so we need to vote on this, correct?
Voting on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment.
This is whether or not to approve the amendment that Councilman Williams presented.
This is not to bring it up, it's to approve, correct?
This is to approve the amendment, whether to amend what was listed on the agenda.
Okay, then we'll vote on it next, correct?
Yes. Okay. Those in favor to approve the amendment submitted by Councilman Williams, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the amendment.
Okay, now we have discussion on the amendment.
Now, we've got to go back to the motion.
Okay, we've got to go to the motion on the amendment.
We've got to go back to the regular motion.
To the motion on adoption of the ordinance as amended.
As amended, okay. Got me confused there. Clerk, will you take the vote?
We've got a discussion.
Okay, we need discussion.
I didn't second that because I just assumed the thing died right there, and it almost did. Anyway, I had an amendment I was going to propose, and it was giving the mayor the same percentage of raise that the employees had received over the past eight years, which would have been a little over 100,000, 102,000. But I like Councilman Williams' proposal better. It's less of a raise than that, so.
Anybody else have any discussion?
Well, I hope my chicken, I mean my council members, who are afraid to do what's right, realize that they're going to get the same flak on this amendment and this raise as they would have gotten had they raised it another 20,000, 30,000, 40,000, $50,000. The public has a distaste about public officials when it comes down to their salaries and stuff. And so no matter what we do at this point, unless we cut it, we're going to be talked about. I would hope that the public realize that you understand that public officials do work. I mean, we're out here every day. And these council members up here, at least one of them said he didn't work full-time, which means he's not serving his district properly, even though we get part-time pay. I don't know of any time of the day or night that I don't get a phone call from my constituents who has a problem. And I've been getting a lot of calls from some of his constituents. That's because he probably don't answer his phone at certain times of day or night because he works part-time. We have people in this city, administrators in this city, who makes a whole lot more money than the mayor makes. Right now, we have department heads who make more money than the mayor makes. Right down the street, we have another governing body who makes more money than the mayor makes. And those part-time commissioners make more money than this council make. I've yet to hear anybody complain. As a matter of fact, one of them makes twice as much as we make. But I don't hear anybody complaining about that. It's just something about public officials who get nervous when they start talking about pay raises. There's seven of us up here, and when this pay raise goes into effect, there might be seven new people up here. So I don't see what the problem is, other than the fact that you've got some people who are running for reelection, and they don't want their opponents to be out there talking about them raising their pay. We're not raising our pay, we're raising the next administration's pay. And people need to understand that, even though we're going to catch the flak, it's for the next administration, whoever that may or may not be. But I think you're going to find that if you do some research, and I've challenged everybody who's listening and the people in this city, do some research and find out what your other CEOs in this community is making, you're going to find that there are a number of them making 40,000 to 50,000 more than the mayor, who have less responsibility, who deals with less people, and the whole nine yards. And I don't want to expose anybody, but we did a research. We did our own research, and we found out, and I was surprised at what I found out, some of the department heads, or let me rephrase, that the CEOs around this community make. And if you've got a problem with public officials making money, then you need to go check on it, because there are some folks out there making a whole lot more money than the folks here at City Hall. And we're not getting anywhere near the service that we should be getting from those individuals who are making more money. And if anybody wants to talk to me off the record, I'll be glad to tell you who they are and what they make, because I don't have a problem with it. And if it gets too out of hand, then I'll start talking about it publicly, so y'all can go down there and bother them instead of bothering us about this little mittens that we're doing here with our city administration. That's all.
Mr. President, I do have a comment. Private sector and public service are completely different entities, and there will never ever be a favorable comparison when you're talking about the private industry versus public accountability. My issue is with the mayor making less than a department head. And I will declare that I would vote at any time to have the mayor's salary above the highest-paid department head or anyone else that works for the city, because he deserves And the other is just residual, as we say, because it goes along with the territory. Thank you.
Billy, I want to say something to you on that score. There is a difference between private and public, no doubt. Benefit's being one of them. But I joined the military for the same reason that I ran for office, and I never did look at how much it's paid. It just didn't do that. Too much stuff comes into focus here. But that's the way I feel about it. Has nothing in the world to do with it, not one thing.
Yeah, I think we need to definitely keep in mind who's paying these salaries and what their average income is, around a little less than $30,000, I think. So you've got to keep that in mind when you start talking about raises for public officials. Look at what the people that are paying the bills, what they make.
Let's be sure, you know, as we have the conversation, let's be sure to recount and recall what the catalyst was. The catalyst was not so much that we were definitely not out to give the council an increase. We looked at the current mayor's salary and determined, based on market data, that it was out of line. It was out of line with both the median and the mean salary for comparable positions throughout the city and the county. Now, as it relates to the public and private sector comparisons, you know, there's some very obvious differences between the two. But at the same time, the public sector has a great opportunity to adopt many of the efficiencies and cost-down opportunities that you see within private business. I mean, there's some great opportunities. We manage, at some level, public taxpayer dollars, and we have a responsibility to be good stewards. And when we forget some of the efficiency practices associated with that, then we are doing a disservice. So again, I think this discussion is good. I think the intent to establish a basis point is good. But again, and I truly understand the whole attempt at protecting what's public and what's private, but please, let's make no mistake about it, we have a great opportunity in the public sector to adopt many of the efficiencies that are practiced within the private sectors. I mean, again, it definitely makes us better stewards over what we're being entrusted in terms of taxpayer dollars.
Let me say this, and I'm going to be thorough. These guys do a good tap dance and step around. I've never compared the mayor's or the salary with private industry or private business. I'm talking about public sector. And I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but if you go right down the street to the other governing body, the administrator down there makes over $100,000 a year. These guys know that. They're just sitting here shuffling their feet and tap dancing around the issue. You go to two or three other public entities around this town, those folks make over $100,000 a year. And I challenge the media to go and talk to those individuals and find out exactly how much they make, if they think we're doing something out of line. We're still underestimating the position of the mayor of this city when you've got other elected officials, other public officials, making 23,000 and 40,000 a year more than the mayor. And I don't care how you dress it up, and how much lipstick that she used to say you put on the pig, it's still a pig. And you guys know that, and I don't know why y'all want to dance around it, for the life of me.
Mr. President, for the record, I don't want to be associated with shuffling, so I might tap dance, but I never shuffle, so let's be clear about that.
I'm going to...
And I have to say, there's no tap dancing here, and there's no dancing around. We stated emphatically the reason why we are voting for this revised revision in it, and we will maintain the fact that we believe that we are our own entity here, and that the mayor deserves to make more than any employee in the city. That's not dancing. That's stating, that's a statement.
Well, basically, if you don't want to serve, don't run.
Okay.
My part on this whole thing is that we're not fixing anything here today. There will still be employees that make more than the mayor of the city of Gaston. And I talked about this upstairs, and I'm going to just tell the public about it, so everybody will be know where I'm coming from. If a supervisor or department head makes $95,000, that's his salary, he's been to city for 25 years, the fourth Friday of each month, he gets a 10% check for what his salary is. If his salary is $95,000 a year, he'll get $950, an extra check that month for $950. You multiply $950 times 12, and it's going to come out just to my head, I think it was $106,000 or $108,000. And that's the math. If that supervisor had been here, or department head, had been here 20 years, he's going to get 8%. That's still going to put him to make it more than the mayor. If you've been here, no, I've still got, I've got the gavel.
What I'm just saying though, but you...
I still want you to know...
You just said what I just said.
If the supervisor had been here, department head, if he had been here 15 years, he's going to get 6% more. So there's no way the mayor of the city of Gaston will ever be paid as much as some of these department head or directors. Anybody can check their head, and they can tell me I'm wrong, but I'm absolutely right. You can go check the payroll.
You're right.
Every month, about longevity pay.
You're right.
You work for the city of Gaston five years, you get 2% if you pay. 10 years, you get whatever that is, 4%. It goes up to 10%. If you've been here 25% of years, you're going to get 10% of your salary. That's any employee, any full-time employee with the city of Gaston, that's what you're going to get. We're talking about operator ones, operator two, garbage trucks drivers, policemen, firemen, they're going to get that check, whatever that check is, they're going to get for the years they're there, they're going to get a longevity check.
They make more money than the mayor.
Mr. Cannon, you're right in that. And as a matter of fact, if I were to, which I'm not going to do, but if I were to go back and look at some of the payroll issues that have occurred in the past, I would probably find that some people that are not in a supervisor's position but work a lot of overtime, some of those persons perhaps make as much as, or not more than the mayor, based on them working overtime. So we've based this on base salary, not compensated, not taken into accounting longevity, or any other activities that will give an employee more than just his base salary. And overtime would be a big part of that.
Well, that's really why the man came to work here, or lady, to start with, because of the benefit of that longevity pay. And it's an incentive to stay with the city of Gaston until he retires. That's what it's based on. Elected official is going to be here two terms, maybe three, hopefully no more than that. You know what I mean?
Yes.
And he's elected. This guy's out there working every single day for that benefit, and he earned every dime of it.
I agree.
I'm not saying he didn't earn it. I'm just being that two-term number you mentioned there.
Well, I would have said that too, except I'm working on five.
I agree. Any employee that works for the city of Gaston deserves what they get. They work hard. I agree with that 100%. Also, too, let everyone know that what Mr. Williams brought up was subject to Attorney General's opinion, am I correct?
That's correct.
Subject to the Attorney General's opinion.
Mm-hmm.
That's for everybody out there to know that.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mr. President. I think, you know, it's good for the public to know that pretty much everything that we do tends to, I mean, we vet it fully to make sure that it's compliant with all applicable law. There's some history with other cities that have done similar, passed similar ordinances that gave us the impression that we won't have any legal issues with this. So we are comfortably voting on this issue with the understanding and belief that it will be supported by an AG's opinion.
Do we have any more discussion? There being no further discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance as amended, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we have two noes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We can move on now. The next one's resolution.
It's the American way.
Resolution authorizing issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. GNY Incorporated doing business Kobe's Japanese Steakhouse at 101 Rainbow Drive Suite, Suite 32 in District 4 has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license due to a change in ownership. A public hearing is not necessary because the outcome was affiliated in business with a previous owner. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business. I know we have a couple of new businesses. We'll start out on this end. Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two resolutions that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. And it seems like we may be able to do them both, or we'll just do them individually. Two resolutions concerning agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment and Smoke on the Fall.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions today as items of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
The first one is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment for Smoke on the Fall. And this is... Well, I was going, okay, move for passage.
Second.
Second, okay, that brings to discussion.
The first one is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment for Hayley and Alexis Band to perform at Smoke on the Fall. That's Resolution Number 21432. And the second one is authorizing Crescent Moon Entertainment for Smoke on the Fall for the John King Band to participate on April the 5th, 2014. And they both are on the same day.
Clerk, Mr. Councilman Williams, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to adopt both resolutions. Is that my understanding?
Yes, that's it. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, Mr. President, I actually have three items, the first of which is a resolution amending our substance abuse policy. I'd like to ask for us to consider this today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, again, this is amending our current substance abuse policy, adopting changes reflective of FTA employees that, and that's Federal Transit Administration employees, that essentially require training and compliance with the drug-free alcohol workplace policy.
Any more discussion?
I was intending to ask upstairs, and hopefully maybe we can get the Personnel Director at our next meeting, we have a general policy for our workers. And if I remember correctly, it's supposed to be up for elected officials, too. So I'd like to get an update on where that policy is. I haven't been called in, I don't know when. I used to be called every month to take a test. Have any of you guys been called for a test?
I think elected officials must be exempt, because in eight years, I haven't been called in.
I don't think so.
And when I was a current employee with the city of Gaston, before I retired, I was called quite frequently.
Well, they called me. I'm not an employee, I'm an elected official. So I'd like to have an update on it.
Probably just picking on you.
That's okay. Not a problem. They can call me every day, as far as that goes. I don't have a problem. For drug or alcohol, they can test me every day.
If you'll try to get the Personnel Director here next week for us, we can go over that. Shane, you might want to check into that for us, too. Okay.
I guess he's rounding up those suspicious characters.
Clerk, will you take the vote on this?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Lee, isn't there a probable cause or reasonable suspicion element to our current policy?
I think what we're currently doing is we will test individuals who are either injured on the job, who have report on job injury, or they have some sort of accident, like an automobile accident, or driving city vehicles, or...
We used to do random drug testing.
Pre-employment, post-accident.
No, sir.
Have any calls, let me ask you.
There's two, no accident at all. There's two lists. There's a random drug testing policy, unless somebody changed it and stopped doing it. That's why I want the Personnel Director here. And then there's all that other stuff you talked about. But the way the policies were set up, everybody, every employee in this city should go at one time or another to be tested, because they're in a random thing. If they pull it out, they leave that name out, so they get everybody out of that pool. And then they have this other policy, the other way they do it. But it was two lines, and I'm not sure why I got, every month I got called up and everything, but...
It is truly random, and I don't think they come off the list, so the same person who caused it's random could be called.
But there's a random list, but then there's a list for all employees, period. That's why I want the Personnel Director here. If I remember correctly, that's the way we set it up. So everybody would get tested regardless, and then there's a random test, and then there's a list of all employees that sometime or another should be tested.
I'm not going to comment, because all of my references are private sector, and apparently they don't comply, or apply here, so I won't even comment on that.
Okay. We'll get them in next week. We'll get them in next week.
Okay, so, are we taking the votes on this?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. We have, we have an item, we have an ordinance amending the NEPA general terms and conditions to include third-party contracts clause as ordinance, and I'd like to ask that we consider that one today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote to consider.
Move to adopt.
Second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is, again, a, it, it enacts a third party, adds a third-party contract clause that essentially just ensures that all third parties comply with the FTA purchasing requirements. And that's related to any civil rights laws, any employment laws, any wage laws, anything applicable, again, to the FTA purchasing requirements.
No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Councilman Avery, do you have anything?
Mr. President, I do have one, one other item. It's a resolution awarding, I'd like to ask that we consider a resolution awarding bid number 3257 for the re-roofing of Weaver Tech Building to Mid-America Roofing Incorporated.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? I think it speaks for itself, really.
It speaks for itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's in the budget.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Councilman Stewart?
Yes, Mr. President. I do have a resolution authorizing agreement between S and M and E Incorporated. This is the resolution that, for environmental study for the 4.2 acres of land we have across the river there behind Kmart. We, of course, we plan on building a, a park there, and walking trails, and picnic tables and what have you. So this is the environmental study that's required. So I ask unanimous consent to consider this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Second.
I think Bill's already discussed what this is. Do we have any more discussion about it? No more discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Councilman Reed, do you have anything today?
No. I'm pleased.
That brings us down to partner reports, committee boards, et cetera. I'll get it out in a minute. We have no department reports. That brings us to mayor and the councils. Councilman Reed, would you like to go first?
No, I think we've said pretty well all we need to say. Thank you.
Councilman Stewart?
I don't have anything in my pocket to say, no. Thank you.
Councilman Avery?
Yeah, you know, I, I, well, I, I voted against my own ordinance because it was amended. And if any of the council members were afraid that they were going to get talked about or have a problem politically, if they were smart, they would have voted against it, too. Because see, now, I didn't vote for the pay raise. And that's what this is all about. Everybody's afraid that they're going to get criticized for voting for a pay raise.
Some of us were. We voted for it.
Well, then you guys go get criticized.
Robert, it's not the first time you voted against your own ordinance, so everybody knows, you know.
I didn't vote against my own ordinance. I voted against my own ordinance as it was amended.
Oh, I know.
Had it been my own ordinance, I wouldn't have voted for it.
I remember years back when you voted, you put an ordinance in to remove the mayor from the podium, and then you turned around and voted against it.
I don't remember that one.
That's a norm.
How about digging that up so we can...
I will. You might dig it up, I got it on file.
Okay, let me have a copy of it. I'd like to see that. But again, I just hope that citizens understand it's about what's right and what's proper. It had nothing to do with personalities or whatever. I, I still think that the mayor of this city, the chief executive officer deserved to be paid more than any employee. And I think Councilman Cannon pretty much pointed it out. At this state and time, we didn't do him any justice, because there are going to be employees who are going to be still making more money than the mayor. And that was not the intent of this pay raise. I have anything else.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, let me, let me say that, that the, the resolution, or the ordinance, I'm sorry, as it was passed, again, gives us a, it gives us a trigger going forward. So that's not, not something that we'll have to address unless the council chooses to address it on its own. But it, it's something that will, will take care of itself going forward. Now, and I, and I want to say this, you know, one of the things that will drive up the salary will be the adjustment of the complete wage scale or salary scale. I'm not sure how many time that's, times that's happened over the last 10 years, maybe once. So, so again, that's not, for those who have a concern that this is going to happen way too frequently, I don't know that we're at risk of, of that taking place. I will say this, Councilman Cannon's point about longevity pay, which is something that's, that's very unique to, to, to the public sector, and, and of course, the, also the, the comment about overtime, those are true statements. I mean, I don't think any of us who are being completely honest will, can't, can't avoid that. But that's generally not something you, you can, you can avoid. You know, wage and hour law requires that, that employees be classified, you know, either exempt or non-exempt, and, and then there, there are certain salary employees that won't qualify for overtime, overtime, and you're going to have scenarios where if you stack overtime, which is not a guarantee, it's a moving target, if you stack overtime on top of a salary, it may cause that individual to eclipse someone that's in the top grade within that organization. So that happens. And, and of course, what we were trying not to do is chase a moving target with this resolution. So again, Councilman Cannon is absolutely correct that the, that the fallout does result with, with some employees still making more, and it will, that'll, that'll continue. But again, it's that, it's that moving target of overtime and longevity pay that we were trying to avoid as we, as we built this, this ordinance. The only other thing that I have is I do want to, to one, thank Quality of Life for continuing to be a, an outstanding corporate citizen. Quality of Life continues to, to do, to do good things within, within the city. You know, yesterday, they broke ground for a, for a new facility in East Gaston that's going to support our school systems from, in terms of medical services, so I do want to thank them for that. We're excited about, you know, what that's going to do for our young people. And the last thing is I, I happen to be at Gaston City High School this morning and noticed a trophy. And I, I think The Times is going to be doing a story on this, but the, the Scholars Bowl team won the state title here recently. So we have, with all that can be said about our young people, we have some very bright young people in our school system. And, and so much so that they won the, the state title. They actually defeated Huntsville High School, I believe it was. And they will be moving on to compete in the regionals for a chance to compete in the national event. So they are the Scholars Bowl state champions for the year 2014. So please, if you know of any of these fine young people, please be sure to congratulate them, because that's a, that's a wonderful achievement. That's all I have.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Councilman Cannon. And thank you, Mr. Williams, for that, for that very interesting tidbit on Scholars Bowl state championship against City High School. We, boy, you know, that, that's something to be proud of, and something that we should really talk about, as much as we talk about championships in other venues in our schools. So they ought to be congratulated on that. The, what you have seen today is a, is a prime example of why you need to be a registered voter and vote in the upcoming elections. If you are not an elect, if you are not a voter, if you are not a registered voter in the city of Gaston, or Littawall County, or the state of Alabama, then shame on you. That's, 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 I'll just leave it like that. You must be registered to vote so that your opinion or your voice can be heard at the polls. But please register to vote. At the same time, go ahead and make sure you got, you've gotten your proper identification to be able to vote in the upcoming elections. The Litchfield Middle School is doing, is still improving. Things are getting better and better at Litchfield on a, on a daily basis. We continue to support that school, and we need the neighborhood, the community to support to make sure that Litchfield moves to the next level. The Boys and Girls Club will be having open house Thursday at 5:00. All the people, this is East Gaston, the old Corey Elementary School. I'm asking that the community to come out and, and see what's going on at the Boys and Girls Club and give them your support. They, the Boys and Girls Club need your support. It is a new organization. It is not the old Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Alabama. It is a completely new organization under new leadership and direction, so please give them some of your support. Thank you.
I thought I was going to close, but I'm going to just go ahead and add my little bit into this again. Once more, what they did here today was not bring the councils, did not bring the mayor's salary up to where it should have been if it wanted to bring it up above the department heads and stuff like that. That did not happen today with this vote. All of this is depending on Attorney General's opinion also. It was in there where that the city council, I think it's percentage they get of the mayor, I think it was 12 percent, I could be wrong, percentage of what his was.
That's the president.
That's the president. What's that, 9? The other, the other one is 9.6 for the council members. That's what that did today. But all of this is pending Attorney General's opinion before any of this stuff goes. Today was the last day to do that, and they voted in today. So the city attorney, his works cut out for him to make sure this is right, what they've done. But anyway, what I was saying a while ago, a department head, I could be totally wrong, but I don't think a department head gets any overtime.
They don't.
So that would limit them. But there's still department head directors out there that's going to make more than the money with longevity.
That's a fixed income, that's not a overtime.
So there's, there's no way that, you know, the mayor could ever make more money than some of these department directors. I mean, that's the bottom line. You can do the numbers, you can do the math, I mean, it's all there. I mean, it's all in the payroll, where you can see all this stuff. There's no way he can ever make any more than that. And saying that, I'm going to ask for an adjournment.
So moved.
We adjourn.[1763.98]